He's gonna be a little late, so are we ready? Where's she going? She's gone in aspect time. While we'll get here. Good evening, the time now is 6:02. We'll start our meeting, our, one of our colleagues is running a little late, but he'll be here soon. So I'll call the meeting to order. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in meetings by, one, accessing the webcast at www.cityofclovis.com/Agendas, or two, providing a written comment at the same website. Three, participating by phone or by coming to the city council's meeting in person. I'll call the meeting to order, and I'll recruit council member Besseger to lead us to the flag service.
Please join me in slitting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the court please call a roll?
Councilmember Ashbeck, I'm here.
Councilmember Besseger.
Here.
Councilmember Monitua.
Here.
And councilmember Wayland is running a little.
Running a little late.
And Mayor Flores.
And I'm here.
First item, business presentation and proclamations. Today we have the honor of having our county sheriff here, Margaret Minns, and she'll have a special presentation here regarding the Clovis Public Safety in appreciation for support of the 2020 Creek Fire. Sheriff Minns, it's all yours. Yes. Can you press the button? Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I'm here tonight to express my appreciation for the law enforcement mutual aid that the city of Clovis through the Clovis Police Department gave during the Creek Fire last year. So I would like the chief to join me up here. This fire started on the busiest weekend in the mountains, Memorial Day weekend. And as a result, over 22,000 people were evacuated. We're not talking about just residents, we're talking about vacationers, hunters, hikers, people enjoying the lakes and the rivers. Twenty-two thousand, it was quite a task. Over 800 structures burned. And as a result of the assistance that your city police department gave, as well as other city police departments, no matter how small, in the county of Fresno, they sent someone to help us with the evacuations or roadblocks. I'm sure they saw territory they never imagined they'd see in their career. They met people they wouldn't normally deal with. And as a result of all of that cooperation, there were no serious injuries and no loss of life. So that is a comment on the efficiency with what, with how they helped us. But I cannot go without saying thank you to our fire services. CAL FIRE, with the pre-work that they did, as well as the work that they did during that fire with the mutual aid from other fire agencies, including the city of Clovis, there was no loss of life. Now remember, the Creek Fire is still the largest single fire in California state history. There's other fires going on, but they're complex fires, which means two or more fires have come together. So it's quite a testament to what our fire agencies did to help us, give us time to get people out, and the assistance that when we called, you hauled. That's what happened, and as a result, there was no loss of life. So with that, we developed a special challenge coin for the Creek Fire. On this coin, it has the sheriff's office emblem on one side. On the other, it has the area that was devastated by the Creek Fire. It commemorates all of the communities that were impacted, and it says, "No Lives Lost." So, Chief, thank you so much for your help, the help of your agency. We couldn't have done it without you.
Put me on the spot here. It's always an honor when somebody calls any other law enforcement agency to answer that call, especially the Sheriff's Department, because they come very often when we need help. So it's truly an honor. We have several of our officers that actually live up in this area, so we jumped at a moment's notice to go up there and help, and we're honored to help and honored to do what we can, and we'll continue to do that every time you call. Thank you.
Questions? No, but our colleague here, Drew, would like to present you with our own challenge coin. Thank you.
It's not a challenge coin.
You're very welcome. Thank you. And just thank you for what you did for us.
Was I, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
The night that this started, I got a call from my dispatch center at the airport saying that there was a helicopter en route with eight to 10 seriously burned people. And when I got down to the airport, a Army National Guard pilot in a Chinook was bringing in an entire load of people. I mean, there had to be 60 people standing inside this helicopter. And it was, it was impressive how the EMS and fire and law enforcement worked at the airport, triaging these people. You had people from Southern California that were there on Memorial Day camping, and they left with nothing, but clothes on their back. And I still vividly remember them coming off the aircraft, and it smelled like a campfire coming out after me. It was that bad. And there were people who, they were just, they were zombies. They didn't know what had happened. And the National Guard housed them, took care of them, fed them. They did an incredible job, and it was really incredible to watch the ambulances and the fire departments that came in and ran this critical incident in an incredibly efficient manner. I was able to sit back and watch instead of being involved, and I was impressed. And so that was truly a team effort, and we're lucky that no one, no one was killed in this fire. But it's nice to know that when things happen, our people are prepared.
Go on with our meeting. Next, for public comments, this is the opportunity for the members of the public to address the city council on any matter within the city council's jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to five minutes or less, or 10 minutes per topic. Anyone wishing to be placed on the agenda for a specific topic should contact the city manager's office and submit correspondence at least 10 days before the desired date of appearance. Anyone present, please come to the podium and give us your name and let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening, Mayor Flores, council members. My name is Bill Seibertson. I'm at 105 Chenault in the Black Horse Area 1, also known as the Renaissance. Last time I had the opportunity of speaking before you is back in May, and I just wanted to thank you for the comments and suggestions you made. I took it to heart and went back to the neighborhood. And in the spirit of Proposition 218, we went ahead and conducted our elections, appointed a, selected a citizens advisory board. That board exists of seven members. There are anywhere from one year to 26 years in the neighborhood, average about nine years. This is a perfect time. The council's receptive, engineering is receptive. I've met with them several times, and we have interest in the neighborhood. So I'm flying high right now, folks, and I just wanted to come back and give you a bookend report saying things are going well. With, that first board meeting was held in September. And in essence, we've set up information in the elections. The first board meeting, we had a code of conduct, all prepared, and we set up, whoops, excuse me, our advisory bylaws. And so we're taking this serious, and we are looking forward to a great continuing of our relationship here. Given that my task is over, I would like to introduce the president of the board, Steve Doherty. And Steve has a couple words to say. So thank you again for your time, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Bill. My name is Stephen Doherty, and I live at 24 Birch Avenue, along with Bill in the Black Horse Estates Area 1, also known as the Renaissance. So last month, I, along with six other residents, was elected to the newly created Black Horse Estates Area 1 Citizens Advisory Board. And subsequently, I was elected by the board as its president, along with Taylor Harden, who's here today, as vice president, and Michelle Reed, who is not here, as secretary. I would like to briefly share the board's mission statement and what this board will provide for the Renaissance community. The board's single mission is to ensure all residents collectively have representation to the city of Clovis in all matters regarding the operations servicing and maintenance of improvements for the Black Horse Assessment District 95-1, Area 1. Through this board, the residents will be able to create a more unified voice by compiling, prioritizing, addressing, and resolving the needs facing the Renaissance community. The board will be the unified voice for the community through which the prioritized concerns will be brought to the city. From there, the board will partner with the city to develop action plans that address and resolve the community's concerns. It is the goal of this board to work with the city in a constructive manner to resolve the Renaissance community's top concerns. I look forward to this new community endeavor and the positive results it will generate. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Great effort. Anyone else here wishing to comment? Any comment not on the agenda? Anyone on the web?
No.
Okay, we don't have any correspondence.
And the city clerk will be covering all those from this point forward.
Okay.
No other correspondence.
I'll get used to it, okay? This is the first meeting. I will get, I will get used to it. This is my, okay. You can't teach an old dog new tricks. Okay, ordinances and resolutions. With respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive the reading of the complete resolution or ordinance. Unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived with unanimous consent of the council. Consent calendar items considered routine in nature are to be placed upon the consent calendar. They will be, will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless council members request individual consideration. Council member vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motion in favor of adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar for adoption of ordinances. Only those that are received, unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Does any one of the council members want to pull any of the consent items? Nobody? Okay, anyone in the public wishing to pull a consent item from the consent calendar? Seen no one? Anyone on the web?
No.
Any correspondence?
No other correspondence.
I did learn. Only took one spanking. One spanking, okay. Okay, so I'll bring you back to council.
I'll move for prison.
Second.
We have motion to second, all those in serious, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, with five oh, motion passes. City managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna quickly run through kind of an update on the COVID status. These are the graphs I've been showing every week. The graph on the left is the confirmed cases, the dark line representing Fresno County on a per capita basis, and the somewhat lighter dark gray line representing the state per capita basis. And the graph on the right is the same graph representing the confirmed deaths from COVID. As you can see, the, both the cases and deaths are dropping rapidly in this current third wave. This is the graph showing the hospitalizations, with the blue representing total COVID hospitalizations in Fresno County, and the red representing the ICU cases. They are also starting to trend in the right direction, which is good news. So vaccines are still available. Fresno County, about 46% of the total population is fully vaccinated. California, that number is 70%. In the United States, it's 56%. The graph shown here is a graph prepared by the state showing the cases, comparing on a per capita basis, the unvaccinated, being the red line, and the blue line representing the vaccinated cases. And as you can see, it is a significant difference during the week that they calculated it. You're eight times more likely to get COVID if you were unvaccinated versus vaccinated. This graph shows the vaccinated deaths versus the unvaccinated deaths, and the difference is even more stark, 17 and a half times more likely to die from COVID if you were unvaccinated versus vaccinated. So, you know, that's just a message that there's still vaccines available. We have links on our webpage if someone's looking to get vaccinated. And I've done a lot of talking about how similar the pattern of this pandemic is to the 1918, 1919 Spanish flu pandemic. So the graph on the left is from the CDC, and that shows the deaths on a weekly basis from the Spanish flu pandemic. The graph on the right is the state and county deaths from the COVID pandemic. And first of all, there's a difference of, significant difference in the magnitude. The Spanish flu pandemic on a per capita basis killed about three times as many people as the COVID pandemic has. But it is notable that fairly similar patterns in an initial wave. The worst wave occurred in the wintertime, and then following with a spring wave. The timing is a little bit off between the two, but so far, it's been very similar patterns. So if there's any source of optimism, every pandemic's different, but the 1918 flu pandemic ended after the third wave, and they didn't have vaccines. So hopefully, if we get enough people vaccinated, and we can move beyond the COVID, or it'll become endemic enough to where it is no longer deadly. It'll still be circulating, we may end up getting a COVID shot every year along with the flu shot, but hopefully, we can move past the severe port. And that should be all the slides I have, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Next will be council comments. Bong?
Someone reported, we were up at the state conference, and so, didn't nothing to report on. Bong?
Yeah, report up as well. California League of Cities had their conference. And I think maybe it's, I'll just mention one area that I kind of attended with some interest, and that was an area related to law enforcement officers and their speech outside of their employment on social media, and the legalities associated with that. And I think that my takeaway was that the area is a little bit unsettled. They did specifically mention a Fresno PD case that was, you know, certainly received a lot of attention here locally, but also, I think, statewide. And the takeaway was that, you know, we really need to be really clear on the expectations of our law enforcement officers outside of their employment when they choose to engage in social media. It's a developing area of law, of course, and I'm not sure where it's gonna land, but the better we are clearly communicating our expectations to our folks is, I think, the better outcome we're gonna have. So, I'd share that.
Lynn?
I'll just share that I attended COG last week for you, and it was a pretty routine agenda. The only item of interest was the performance review of the executive director, but otherwise, the business was quite routine. And just a reminder, I will not be here on Monday. I said my apologies to Dr. O'Farrell and Dr. Fogg, so I'm sorry that I will miss that joint meeting.
Drew? I did not attend the League of Cities, I had some work commitments. I did attend the National Night Out on Saturday night at Dry Creek Park. Very nice turnout, very well handled by the police department. Congratulations, chief, that's all I have.
I didn't go to COG, I went to EDC. It was a pretty nice event in the, at the zoo. And I also went to the league, it's not called the league anymore, it's CAL Cities. We have to stop calling it the league. There was one seminar I went to that was, I liked it a lot, except for today it wouldn't work, Facebook. Chad was in the same seminar. There's a lot of tricks on Facebook that they kind of taught us, and we were, it was presented by one of the persons that's in charge, gave his email address and everything. So I think Chad and, and now we'll become Facebook connoisseurs. We'll give you all his email address, where you can contact him directly. If you ever had problems with Facebook, you could never call anybody. And this guy was giving us his email address, and gave us a lot of tricks of the trade, and so. And encourages us in city government and in leadership to use it as a way to communicate with our constituency. So it was a good, I was surprised, it was a good seminar. Good seminar. Yes, so the, the biggest, I thought, the biggest question was on, on the, what do you call it? The caucuses, and that went, that it has changed. So now they, the five caucuses, minority caucuses, will now be part of the board. So, and there were people trying to object to it, and they couldn't. They were voted out. I mean, they couldn't even object to it, so, and it was overwhelming. I mean, it was, it was a slam dunk. I think all the other coastal cities just decided that's the way it's gonna be now. So that was the only one that really mattered as far as the resolutions that we had a vote on. And, and that one was by, they made us write, it was a ballot, written ballot. So you might see my name. What do you know? Clovis might be the lone no vote on that one. With my name on it, so, so don't be surprised. Oh, it has, it has my name on it. It was, it was a written vote. And the other ones was just a, a voice vote. So, they said it was part of the, I'll be, I'll be canceled, so we'll see. Clovis will be canceled. Okay, so let me find my place here. So. And now we'll move on to a closed session. That'll be a closed-door city council meeting, allowed by state law for consideration pending legal matters and certain matters related to personnel and real estate actions. Did anyone come from the public to speak on any one of these items? We have, number six would be public employee appointment, and number seven, conference with labor negotiations. If so, if you want to make public comment now, this is the time to do so. Anybody on the web?
No.
And no correspondence?
No.
Okay, so at this time, we'll go into closed session to address items six and seven as printed on the agenda. I don't believe we'll, we'll have a decision made today.
I don't believe we may, but we may have an announcement, but that'll depend on what action you guys take tonight, if any. So if necessary, we can come out and report out.
Okay, so we might report out.
Yes.